Mr. Jim and Angelo.
Here.
Mr. Jim?
Here.
Mrs. Wolford?
Here.
Mr. Scopora?
Here.
Mr. Bold Mary?
Here.
Mr. Forage?
Here.
Mayor Griffin? Present? All present. Thank you. May I have some, our motion will approve the amendments for May 13, 2013.
Madam Mayor, I move the minutes of the May 13, 2013 meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
May I have second?
I second that, Madam Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the fiscal department reports in Bayfield so month of May 2013, please?
Madam Mayor, send the move.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scopora, all in favor?
Madam Mayor.
Opposed?
Madam Mayor.
May I ask a question of the manager? What are the reports from the parking on-street and off-street? How are we doing as compared to the budget?
In my manager's report, I have a sentence that reads, "First five months of this year were 22 percent over the first five months of 2012, and we're a little behind budget because it took us a while to implement the rates." But again, we're 22 percent up over the first five months same period last year.
Then we're under budget?
Slightly. Again, we were anticipating when we adopted the budget that the on-street rates would be effective January 1. However, we had to, again, order all the meters, and it took us till about the end of April to get the new rates fully implemented.
Aye, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? They all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, may I, and I could point you this out if you guys are going pretty quickly here. Prior to this evening's meeting, we are to have a public hearing.
And I would suggest perhaps before we get into citizens' requests that we just briefly
adjourn the meeting before the public hearing when industrial development authority. Thank you, pardon? Make a motion?
May I have a motion for temporary adjournment? Send the Madam Mayor.
I'd like an emotion.
Mr. Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Your motion is carried.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of council, we will now have a public hearing which has been advertised in the Latrobe Bulletin. The hearing was scheduled for 6:30 PM. It is now, according to my luck, 6:30 PM. This is a hearing required under the Tax Equity and Responsibility Act. Basically, it involves two projects involving Seton Hill University. The first project is a refinancing of three existing IDA bonds. The second project is the issuance of bonds in order to build a science center. So in order to have these two projects approved, council will need to adopt two resolutions authorizing the mayor as the applicable representative of the city to sign off and indicate written approval of these projects. Prior to that happening, the act requires a public hearing. So without any further comment, if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to comment upon either of the two projects, now would be the time to do so. Please go to the microphone in the rear. I'll ask again if anyone wishes to offer comment for the second time. I'll ask again if anyone wishes to offer comment for the third time. Madam Mayor, let the record reflect that no one desired to offer comment regarding these two projects. So with that, the public hearing would now be closed, and we can resume our meeting.
Thank you. Are we ready for the next one?
I'm just wondering if you wanted to continue, and you approved section, the Seton Hill IDA refinancing project.
Now, and then do that.
Always person. Before you mean before a public hearing?
I think so.
That's all right.
That's why I want to be long and extended, the public comments.
Is there an objection by anybody from council or not?
No.
Madam Mayor, yes. You can move item number one to vote for at this time. Item number, item number one on the agenda under the Finance Department would be approved, the Seton Hill refinancing project. So with that in mind, the caption of the resolution would read, "Approving the Latrobe Industrial Development Authority-Seton Hill University Refinancing Project." There are many whereas's, but we get to the resolution now therefore be resolved, section one. The Council of the City of Latrobe is hereby approved, the financing of the project for purposes of TEPRA. Section two, that the mayor of the City of Latrobe, who is also president of council of the city, is hereby authorized and directed to render approval of the project under the provisions of TEPRA. Section three, the approval grant hereunder is subject to the provisions of the Home Rule Charter and all other applicable ordinances of the city. Approval is further subject to the express condition that any note issued thereunder shall not constitute or give rise to a pecuniary liability of the City of Latrobe or a charge against its respective creditor taxing powers. And section four, the mayor, secretaries of city council, and any other city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign all documents, including the approval and consent form attached here, too. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, send the move.
Mr. Bold Mary, second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forage, all, bar any comments, questions? Okay, bar. This is Resolution 2013-26. Mr. Jim and Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Forage?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Go to seven yes. Okay, motion carried, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, there is a second resolution, and it is entitled to approving the Latrobe Industrial Development Authority-Seton Hill University Science Center project for the issuance of obligations not to exceed $10 million for the construction of a 52,000-square-foot health and science center. And the resolution reads now therefore, section one, that the Council of the City of Latrobe is hereby approved, the financing of the project for the purposes of TEPRA. Section two, mayor of the City of Latrobe is hereby authorized and directed to render approval of the project under the provisions of TEPRA. And section three, the approval granted hereunder is under and subject to the provisions of the Home Rule Charter and all other applicable ordinances of the city. Approval is further subject to the express condition that any note thereunder shall not constitute or give rise to a pecuniary liability of the City of Latrobe or a charge against its respective creditor taxing powers. And section four, the mayor, city secretary, and any other partner city officer to sign any or all documents, including the approval and consent form attached here, too. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, send the move.
Mr. Bold Mary, second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forage, all, bar any comments, questions? Okay, bar. This is Resolution 2013-26. Mr. Bold Mary?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jim and Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forage?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
That is seven yes. Motion carried, thank you. Any, now it's time for citizens' comments. If you wish to speak, you should go to the microphones, state your name and address, please.
My name is Bob Maggiore, M-A-G-G-I-O-R-E, 132 East to come to have a little trip. I'm commenting on the refuse and transfer station agenda. Let's make a deal, what kind of a deal? That's the question. After reading about the contracting out of what we dearly call the best dump in Latrobe, I viewed the videos, and they're very good, and I congratulate anybody that has any part of that, both the agenda and the regular meetings. And I have to say that Rosie Wolford and Mr. Bold Mary have won the over in saying that they are uncomfortable on voting at this time because more information is needed. My question is, why contract at all? What we have seen is a well-run organization, a competent people. And the revenue is 27 percent coming in for the transfer station and whatever else is involved. What, what I can't understand is, when you have 27 percent of revenue coming in, and you have 80 percent of taxes bringing it to rest here, wouldn't it be prudent to try and figure out how more revenue can be brought in through the transfer station without contracting it out? I just, I just don't understand that part, that maybe I didn't listen to enough council meetings. But are you going to be satisfied with the way this station is going to be run, and what really are the plans for those taking it over? Let's face it, it's all about money, and if they see money there, why can't we see money there as a councilman in the town? I think there's more information needed. I don't think you should rush into it. I would hope that one of you put on the floor a motion to forestall this vote and tell you there's more about it. I'm sure you don't want to get the contract out. I'm sure you want to contract out the golden years and end up with a Friday. Remember the famous quote of one of our federal representatives? You have to pass it before you can find out what's in it. Please, go over that contract. Whatever you live for, that's it. But you don't have to rush into it. I'm sure that the people that want the contract can wait until you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I have a few. James Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe. I have a few items I wanted to discuss. One is the zoning hearing board. I see on our agenda tonight, we're going to appoint Tom Horwath to the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board hasn't had a meeting in Latrobe for over a year now, and I'm on the zoning hearing board. I think possibly the people on the zoning hearing board could be utilized in the city finding areas and notifying people that maybe can make corrections in some of the areas in Latrobe that need corrected with regard to dilapidated houses and grass, trees, things like that issue. So I saw the article in the paper that on the, in the Latrobe Bulletin regarding Rosie's commitment to the making corrections in that there, and I applaud that. So I think that the zoning hearing board could be better utilized in that area. Second of all, as you're all aware, my, my, regarding the time when the citizens make requests of council. I again would like you to, any, anytime you make a change in the agenda, it's not on the agenda itself, anytime you're going to amend agenda or add additions to the agenda, I think the citizens should have the opportunity at that time to comment on any additions or amendments to the item. And I hope that you would consider that. Also, the last thing is that the, the, at the end of the meeting, they discussed the adding of the city employees over age, up to age 26 regarding the eye care and dental. I would have thought that this would have been negotiated in the contract, when we negotiated a contract with our employees. I don't know that that is a mandated item, I'm not sure. It may be a mandated item on the, on the medical Obamacare. Okay, well, I think that the city should talk about this a little bit more before they consider what it may cost the city in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Casey Stubbs of 747 Forever Lane in Ligonier, and I sent a letter to the city manager, Alex, to forward on to the council on May 31 regarding rental inspection ordinance that you guys are looking to pass. And I just had a couple of comments I wanted to make on that. First of all, I just wanted to thank the council for all the work they're putting in the city, as being the City of Latrobe is very important to me, and I like all the work that you guys are doing there, I appreciate it a lot. However, with that being said, I think there's some important things that we need to look at with rental inspections that I want to make a comment on. And the first is that everybody hates dilapidated properties that make the, the economy or the city look bad. Nobody likes that, however, because it drops property values, it makes the city look bad, and, you know, nobody wants to live in a city like that. However, I believe the plan to force rental inspections would do far more harm than good in our city, and I'm asking you to reconsider your stand on that, this matter. And here are some things I'd like to point out about the potential ordinance that I think are very damaging, and these are just a few of the reasons why I stand opposed to the idea. And the first of all is because most of the landlords in Latrobe are very responsible citizens, and they're doing a good job. And so when you are adding extra regulation to them, you're punishing the good landlords just to target a few of the bad ones. That's bureaucracy at its finest. When you punish the good guys, you're not sending a positive image of the City of Latrobe. As a matter of fact, there are landlords in this city that are purchasing distressed properties and spending thousands of dollars remodeling and repairing those properties and renting them out for people to live in. This is one of the most valuable services that the city has, and yet this ordinance would punish those people who are doing this. Every restriction added to the process of flipping homes in our city makes it harder for them to accomplish this service. And if you do your research, you'll find that most of the distressed properties in Latrobe are from property owners and not landlords. And also, the City of Jeanette has rental inspections, yet they are one of the most rundown communities in Western PA. Rental inspections did not work for them, so why are we trying to copy what they're doing? Additionally, Mount Pleasant passed rental inspections last year, and two of the council members that voted for the ordinance have been removed from their position specifically because they voted for the rental inspections. And three or more are being challenged in the next election period. The community there spoke loud and clear, and yet the council did not want to listen to them. If you research this, you'll see that this is true, and I would not like to see that same thing happening here in Latrobe as well. In addition, if you look, there are many city lawsuits and boroughs that have, many lawsuits that have taken place for the cities that have passed this ordinance. And we, if we, if that happens in Latrobe, it's a lose situation, whether you win or lose because of all the legal fees that the city has to pay, and that's taxpayer money, that's citizens' money that's getting spent on that. Lawsuits and anger at citizens are a very real possibility here in Latrobe if you move forward with this ordinance. In addition, the rental inspection ordinance violates the Constitution, and I believe that the Latrobe and the council of our great city wish to honor the Constitution. U.S. Constitution amended for search and seizure, the right of the people to be secure in their person's house with papers and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated, and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause, supported by oath or affirmation. So some solutions would be, instead of punishing the good guys, why not punishing the offenders and those that are doing harm? There are actually current codes in place that you could enforce, such as the Building Maintenance Code or the Landlord Tenant Act of 1951, so you could enforce those codes, those codes instead of adding new regulation. Also, I believe that empowering tenants to speak up would do great things for the city. If tenants have an issue with their property, they can speak directly to the landlord's attention, and if the landlord then would not handle it, then they could report to the city. I think that a thriving and growing city is one that is self-governed and not over-regulated. If we take pride in our city and do what's right by our city, it will be seen by others, both here and outside our city, and they will want to get involved and be a part of it. So we could also educate landlords and tenants and empower them by giving them self-inspection forms that they could use as a guide for their property. This way, the landlords would know what was expected of them, and the city could carry out fines or punishment if the landlords don't do what's required. That way, you'd be giving the landlords a chance upfront. And I believe the bottom line is that if we truly believe that Latrobe is a great place, which I do believe, then we are going to make it a place that people will want to come and live, and not a place where people will have to be in fear of the city. And I propose that you remove the rental inspection ordinance proposal, and if you have any feedback or comments on that, I would love to hear them. Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question of you, sir.
Yes.
Would you mind telling us the addresses of your properties?
I have one property in Latrobe, and that's 337 Miller Street.
Project 33?
337 Miller Street.
Thank you.
Thanks, Senator. So there are four.
Mr. Stubbs, I read your email, and you did make some valid points. However, we don't have a rental inspection ordinance either on the books or one has been, one has not been proposed. We've discussed this issue intermittently over the last few years. We've never gotten any further than that, so.
Just to be clear, there's not been a draft presented for review of council, nor to the public as well. But we have certainly, Casey and I have discussed this on the street and other places, because, again, thanks to the video, we're trying to, long before they get to the agenda, Mr. Miller, have them open to the public so that before it's seen the light of day, there's been a lot of thought and discussion to it, so people like Mr. Stubbs can come and begin to get the dialogue. We were thinking of July, having it, you know, the first kind of reading of it, you know, the draft for review and moving in that direction. That's what my manager's report reflects. Thank you.
Right, and just one comment is that when I spoke with Alex, I was under the impression that it was going forward in July. That's why I came forward today.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Don Greiner. I'm with ASME. I'm here on behalf of the citizen workers of Latrobe, our members who work here for the city. Our message to the council is simple. You must postpone your vote on the garbage contract as it relates to the transfer station. National Labor Relations Act speaks to subcontracting, and it states that the employer must seek out and announce its intention to the union. It must provide all relevant information regarding the subcontract to the union, and it must negotiate in good faith with the union before awarding a contract. None of these things has happened. What did happen was, we received no formal notice. We came to you after we heard it through the grapevine. We made a demand on May 31 for negotiations, and I have not received a response to that yet. And it's been like pulling teeth, getting answers, much less pertinent information. Let's see what we have found out. We had a couple of opportunities. Well, first, I'll tell you the things we don't know. First, we don't know if there's going to be any appreciable savings to the people in this city. And believe me, they count in this, too. Our membership, our citizens here, they're taxpayers here, they care about this city. They lived here, most of them, most of their lives. So make no mistake, this isn't about greed, this is about taking care of the people who take care of you and taking care of yourselves, Latrobe, in the process. What we don't know is, we don't know if there's going to be any appreciable savings in this, in discussions. I couldn't get an exact figure. I had to make a guess myself of what it might be. We don't know how this will impact all of our members. We don't know how road salt will be hauled when needed. Let me explain that. Right now, the roll-off trucks that are used at the transfer station and used haul garbage also serve other functions. They haul gravel when necessary, they haul salt when you short salt. One of our guys goes out, gets the salt, gets it here to keep your road safe, in those roll-off trucks that the city wants to get rid of. The trucks are also used for, again, gravel, for cleaning up road debris, for cleaning up after fires, down branches and trees, and other uses. So we don't know, we don't know how the fire debris is going to be cleaned up, or how storm cleanup is going to happen anymore. We don't know where the money for the alleged improvement projects that council has talked about is coming from. Let me elaborate on that. It's been said they want to transfer two people from the station to work on the streets, but your budget shows there's no money to fix your streets. So what's going to happen to them? How's this work going to get done when there's no money? It's a little bit of smoke and mirrors to me, folks. We don't know if this transfer station is going to be manned by qualified people. You realize, if people go up there and they put the wrong stuff in that dumpster, contractor, am I using the right term? If they put the wrong stuff in there, you could have a fire, you could have toxic chemical problems. We don't know if the contractor is going to provide somebody that's going to even care, much less look at what's going to be dumped in there. We don't know who's going to, who's going to keep an eye on things on Saturdays because we've been told our people aren't going to be working on Saturdays anymore. So we don't know how this is going to affect the safety of our employees, we don't know how it's going to infect safety of the plant, and we don't know how it's going to impact the environment of the areas surrounding the transfer station. We don't know about the solvency of the so-called low bidder. Now, why do I say so-called? Because their bid has omissions, and it has mathematical errors, which in my opinion, put that whole bid in question. And why do I say solvency? Well, what, this company's changed its name like, what, two, three times in the past year or so? Somebody needs to investigate this. They need to find out why, not the spin, but the truth. Now, let me tell you about some things we do know. In our conversations, we found out that this bid will bring about higher, higher rates. We know the city will lose revenue from its roll-off service because they won't provide that service anymore. What that means to the people of Latrobe, when you used to be able to call over and say, "Hey, I need, I need a roll-off box, I need a dumpster," our guys get it to you that day or at the latest, the next day. It's up to this outside contractor when you're going to get it now, and you don't know what they're going to charge. What we also know is that the so-called low bidder doesn't include Saturday service. According to the, the discussions we have, they're not going to have somebody up there at the station like we have now. We don't know, we don't know why these errors and omissions exist, but think about it, if they can add up a column, can they be called a responsible bidder? So I'll say that the people that we In our conversations, we found out that this bid will bring about higher, higher rates. We know the city will lose revenue from its roll-off service, because they won't provide that service anymore. What that means to the people of Latrobe, when you used to be able to call over and say, "Hey, I need, I need a roll-off box, I need a dumpster," our guys get it to you that day, or at the latest, the next day. It's up to this outside contractor when you're going to get it now. And you don't know what they're going to charge. What we also know is that the so-called low bidder doesn't include Saturday service. According to the, the discussions we have, they're not going to have somebody up there at the station like we have now. We don't know, we don't know why these errors and omissions exist, but think about it, if they can add up a column, can they be called a responsible bidder? So I'll say that the people at Latrobe, our members, your neighbors, have lived here all their lives. They care what happens here. Make no mistake about it. This is about more than their jobs. We know they're going to lose ours, and some of them might lose their jobs. So, they know the work, and they'll do it right, as they always have. The transfer station makes money. It's not broke. You don't need to fix it. You don't have answers to a lot of questions. No successful business hands its profit, profit over to another company. It invests in its people, it grows its assets, and it provides better services. It doesn't take services away and raise your rates. Now, some people on the council, that's exactly what they want to do. They want to take your jobs out of town, they want to take money out of town, ship it to another city. What I'm saying is, don't let them do this. Don't let them ship your neighbor's jobs to another city. Don't let them ship your tax dollars to another city. Don't let them cut your services, and don't let them raise your rates. Don't let them replace your citizen workers with God only knows who. Don't make the same mistake other cities have. It's a fact that there's been this flirtation with contracting out all over the state and all over the country, and more and more, the people have done it, said, "We want our employees back. We want to control the operation. We want responsible people, not some contractor from whom knows where." Don't make the mistake that other places did. Say no, Latrobe, and say it loud, because the city of your future, the future of your city depends upon it. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greiner.
Mr. Greiner. Who did you contact on May 31st and ask for a...
We sent a certified letter, sir.
Did you talk at all to the manager?
We sent the letter to him, and we sent coffee sour.
Did he respond to you?
I have no response to date, sir.
The manager did not respond, nor anybody else?
Correct.
All right.
To my, to my knowledge, there, I haven't been in my office today, sir, so in deference to Alex. Now, I did call in, I did, at about 4:00. I haven't been later.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I'd only comment on one thing. The transfer station is not being leased out. The only thing that really just big concerns itself with is the trucking, the trucking and disposal. And I think that the manager can probably advise you as to exactly what's in these specifications, and I hope that he would. So, that's my re-comment, sir.
Okay, if I may. We've had some discussions with Mr. Graziani, and you were present at one of the discussions.
Yes, that's correct.
We understand that, that, you know, it's hauling out garbage is part of it, but there is concern over what's going to happen when, like, on Saturdays, as we've been told, that our people aren't going to be up there. We don't know what's going to happen. As an example, though, tell you, and I think we covered it.
Yeah.
On a Saturday, you might have the compactor full at 8:30. Okay? We don't know if contractors are even going to have somebody there to pull it. So then, what do you tell the people? Well, you got to wait till who knows when, or come back Monday?
Oh, I agree with you. That shouldn't occur.
Okay.
The only thing I would point out is that this whole operation has been examined by Delta Group, and they're doing the early intervention plan, and essentially, that plan is offered to cities and municipalities that are frightfully close to bankruptcy. And they have determined, we're not quite there, but that we're headed toward it. So, Mrs. Wolford's correct in saying there could be layoffs. But I think that your last best chance not to have any layoffs is to select this low bidder. And I'm going to tell you why. We have, we try to run the city, of course, like a business. And this business of transferring goods, or the trash, taking the trash to the disposal has a cost, is, is a cost. And so, the low, the low bidder has given us a cost of $20, $39.50. That is to pick up the trash and take it to a disposal spot, and he pays for the disposal also. Currently, currently, according to the manager's report and what I've been able to glean from Delta Development, our current cost to do that, including disposal and transportation, is $67 a ton. Now, what does that do? Let me explain. First of all, there's a thing, and I'm sure you're familiar with it, where you have to, the revenues have to meet the expenses, and that requires a certain amount of income to do that. Now, here's the kicker. If you stick with what we're doing now, and with what I think the high bidder stated as $67 a cost per ton, you'd have to do approximately $627,000 worth of business at the transfer station. If the council, and we get all these other things worked out, selects the low bidder, the, the amount that you would have to do at the transfer station would be reduced to $279,000, $891.27.
Okay, not to interrupt, but let me ask you a question.
Sure.
How much of the revenue, how much revenue are you going to lose from the roll-offs that they take around for the contract here in houses? Now, if you can answer that, because you're talking about $67 a ton versus another amount, but are you counting in the revenue you're losing?
Sarah, let me say this, that the only thing we saw in this bid, and the bid and specifications were developed by the manager, the swister, our consultant, we got one figure. It's up to the city to set the prices on what we charge customers out in the field. Okay? We get this whole package for what they have said. I think it's $1,290,000, is that for the second year? So, you know, that, I guess I'm answering your question, but we set the price that we're going to receive, so the city's not going to lose any money. But let me, let me continue with the thought that I started.
Well, I don't understand. How are you replacing that lost revenue from the roll-offs?
We set the prices. Well, when you say a roll-off, see, I'm not sure that I...
When they take, when they take the dumpsters to houses that are being remodeled or repaired for...
We set the price. They, they don't get that directly. We set the price. We bill, we collect.
They have a price here, Richard, for roll-off service.
Oh, they, they do, but we, we...
So they're charging, ma'am, they're, they're charging the city?
Well, yes, that is correct. This contract is with the city.
So you're losing revenue and paying them to carry it?
No. Through the Delta program, they told us that the roll-off business is not that very, you know, don't make us the money that we think it does.
We haven't, I haven't seen those numbers.
I'm looking at the Delta program right there. They told us that.
I, excuse me, sir, let me see. I haven't seen those numbers. I, I'm aware they are. And when I talked to Michelle Nestor, she didn't like this proposal either. She said, "If we want to get out of the transfer business, then we should get out of the transfer business. Cutting it in half isn't going to, isn't going to solve what some people think are our problems." I would prefer that we try to see if we can grow this business. We know that there are commercial businesses out there that are not using our transfer station, because we're not cost competitive, a lot of industry in the town and in the area. I would prefer we look at trying to grow this business, because it is our only revenue-generating source. And when I spoke to Michelle, she said the numbers aren't that difficult. Well, if they're not that difficult, why can't we see them? What, where are they? Hidden? The fact that it makes money or doesn't make money? I can't get a straight answer. I'm sure you can't get a straight answer. Not to mention the fact, not to mention the fact, that you guys requested a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and only one out of three of the council members that were supposed to be there showed up. And I think that's terrible, that you guys did not, you, you want to speak, and, and the people that are supposed to be talking to you aren't, aren't listening. And they're going to come in here and tell you they know what, that what they're doing. We need to stop and take a breath and take a look, because we do not, we don't know. You can't get a straight answer. I can't get a straight answer.
What we, what we was talking about, on the first quarter, I didn't get no letter, Richard didn't get no letter, Alex didn't get no letter, he just stayed there.
No, Fabian, we have, in our agenda meeting...
We got to be here one day, we spent there, we talked to all these people. We talked to him, to you and yourself.
There was a, two weeks ago, our agenda meeting, we left here, and, and Alex advised everyone that there was going to be a meeting, and that the city employees wanted to meet with the committee, and only Mike Scupor was the only one that showed up. And it was, we talked about it. All of us sat here and talked about it.
Because we, you said about going, and we were advised just the committee. So it was, it was supposed to be the...
I wanted to go, but I know the month.
I know, we had enough months, just for the committee.
Personnel committee, personnel.
Anyway, Mr. Greiner, may I continue? Rosie, do you have something else?
No, Richard, go ahead.
All right. Well, Mr. Greiner, here, here's the point, I guess I was trying to make, that there is a certain level after which the, the transfer station will make money. Now, under the current method, if we do not gross in revenue up there, the figure I have, $627,000, we don't start making money.
Hey, you realize they gross two...
Now, let me continue, please. Under the contract, which we are now examining, and which eventually we may have, may authorize, that figure is reduced to $279,000. In other words, when we reach $279,000 and have a figure of $39.50 a ton for transportation and disposal, it's after that point, we make money. But here is the most important thing. After that point, with the contract that's being offered, we make $51.50 a ton. $51.50 a ton. But after the contract that we're in now, and doing it the way we're doing it, the difference is that we only pull, pull down $24 a ton. So that, with this contract, and with the disposal and transportation, we have a chance to do what Rosie is saying, grow the station. But I want to tell you, we'll make more money under the, this contract that's being offered to us than we will under the present system. That's all I wanted to tell you.
Okay. Now, now, if I can refer, and no offense to you, sir, but I know how lawyers like to hold the table, so that everybody forgets what the opposition said. So let me reiterate. This transfer station grossed over $2 million for the past two years. So don't tell me this contract's the deal-all and end-all. Secondly, you're telling us what they're going to give you per ton, or what you're going to make per ton. They got math errors. You don't even know if it's right. I don't know why some of the people on this council want to be so blind and push this through no matter what. The bottom line is this, these people are going to be hurt, the taxpayers are going to be hurt, their rates are going to go up, they're going to lose service, and at the end of the day, we contacted your lawyers, and I believe they contacted you. Negotiation is required before this is passed.
Mr. Greiner, I'd like the, like, two points. First of all, Mr. Jim said the city establishes the rates that we charge. Yes, but that's based on the rates that are charged us. And you talked about the roll-off business advanced, their local roll-off service per box is $213, and Republic was $75 for roll-off boxes. So right there, our charge is based on their charge to us. So we do set the price. And the other thing I want to say, I think we need to have an up-and-down vote on this tonight. Set this aside, reject these contracts. We are in violation of NLRB rules and regulations right off the bat. There are discrepancies between the two contracts. There are math errors, there are omissions. We need to vote up-and-down, and we need to reject this contract, this proposal outright.
Thank you. Anybody else? Steven, do you wish to speak?
Mr. Paul Dinarri, it is on the agenda, so you can certainly bring it up to vote.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is John McGorn. I'm here representing Free Marine Services and Republic Services. We are, we are proud to service the residents of this community for the past 12 years, and that we've done a pretty fair job of doing that. Thank you. Before council for the third time tonight in less than a year is the Refuge Recycling Contract for the City of Latrobe. And for the first time, it includes, this, this time year, includes the transfer station. Some could say, doing this for a third time in such a short period of time could be a failure of the system, or could it be a persistence to get it right? I believe the truth is somewhere in the middle of those two comments. Republic Services for the third time is the only responsible bidder on this contract. In each of our submissions, we have met the intent of the bid, in doing so with cost control and with the best interest of this city. Council's again challenged with making an effective choice for the residents of this community. I've heard, we've had comments from both sides of this, of this, I'm just simply putting our company's spin on this. Republic Services sent a letter to the city officials last week concerning the award of this contract. I would like to take a few moments to speak to council and the audience on a few of the points. But before I get into that, I'd like to ask Mr. Jim one question, please, so the audience understands what you're voting on tonight. You said that this bid was only for the hauling and disposal of Refuge, correct?
I think that's the main, the main theme is for the hauling and disposal. In other words, to get us out of the trucking business. Now, how does, how does that differ from your understanding, that we, we are trying to get out of the trucking business?
Well, I, I think you're trying to get out of the trucking business, but let's not forget the rest of this. The contract requires us to have a front-load piece of equipment down at the transfer station so that we, so the contractor has to clean up around the transfer station. It also, and then, and the addendum says that safety is also a responsibility of the hauler. Once again, I don't think that's about hauling and disposing of Refuge. You're putting the actual operation of the station onto the contractor. So I think it's more than just safety and more than, I mean, more than just trucking and disposal, it's a whole lot more. We have to have people, if we have to have a, a front loader down there to load up stuff, and we have to, we're in charge of safety, we're in charge of repairing the compactor. In the addendum, it says specifically that the contractor is in charge of all the equipment stationed down there, as well as the contract, as well as the compactor. So, you need to have someone down there to make, and I agree with people here, you've got to have someone down there to make sure that the, the operation goes safely, and the operation, you know, someone's there to maintain the compactor, because at 8:30 in the morning, it will be full on a Saturday morning, like this past Saturday, or next Saturday.
So who's running the compactor under your understanding?
The contractor is running the compactor. So we're in charge of safety, we're in charge of maintenance. If it breaks, it needs repair, we have to replace it. It says in the bid documents. I'm not making this up. This is what the city put forth, the garbage committee put forth in this, so, but our bid, our bid, I don't have a problem with that, because our bid reflects a price that we're going to do all those things. Okay? So that, that doesn't scare me as a company, but there are things that, that we have to consider here. Over the past 12 months, there's been a lengthy discussion of the city's transfer station and its vital importance to the city. Republic understands the importance of this transfer station, and has applied, the city a plan to assume the operation of the transfer station in our bid submission. We have outlined the changes, provided detailed information, and even provided illustrations and diagrams of our potential, of the necessary changes to bring this facility up to ocean I mentioned again how important, you before me have mentioned, this is to the financial well-being of the city. I asked then, why would another contractor be considered to be awarded this, this bid? The addendum contractor has demonstrated in two of his three bid submissions that simple instructions of completing a bid were not followed, or even able to make simple adding and multiplication equations in their submission. Based on the bid results, Republic Service was the lowest responsible bidder for the residential, commercial, industrial customers. I ask, is the other contract the kind of organization the city wants to employ to run its transfer station in an effective manner? Did the other bidder include an operation plan for the transfer station as required by the bid specifications? Or mention any changes, upgrades, details, or how they would upgrade the transfer station to make it ocean compliant? No. Did the other bidder submit financial segments that have losing, or show a negative loss to the company for their last three years? You could talk about name changes, in this industry, we all go through that, that they've mentioned, that they've submitted, you know, that they've had negative financial statements for the past three years. Once again, this is one of the things that we had to do as a bidder was to show that we're responsible to do these things. It doesn't appear that bidder's qualified or really cares about what the city and its residents need. If you accept this submission, in the end, you may be further jeopardizing the future of the city by not limiting the city's exposure to liabilities. The city cannot wave away its liabilities without taking the necessary precautions to reduce the risk. And what I'm saying is here, is if you said in the bid documents that it's the responsibility of the contractor to run this facility, if the contractor doesn't meet that requirement that you've set forth in the bid documents, you then become the liability on the city and not with the contract because you failed to make do with what you said in there. I ask tonight that you either accept this agreement of Republic Services Allied or Green Ridge Way Service, or reject the bids entirely, because I don't believe in the end, anybody else other than Green Ridge Way Service or Republic Services meets the needs in this bid or in this city. Thank you.
Mr. McGorn, I do note that your company is, I think it listed assets of eight billion, one hundred million.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGorn. Does anybody else wish to speak?
People can banter and talk. I must speak.
I do, I do have one other question here.
Yes.
Was, and I'd like to ask the manager this, was there any Freedom of Information Acts requested in the past forty-eight hours of business for this contract? Has there been any Freedom of Information Acts submitted to the city in the last forty-eight, the last two working days?
No, we did receive, I think, a fax request or a fax letter from Republic Allied related to your concerns. And so as far as I can tell, I don't think we received one. But just to be clear and back to a point that Mike McGrayer made, we have made both of these bids available electronically and in print to both the public, to both bidders, to the union, to city workers, to city council, and anybody who's willing to read over the thick documents.
Just to make sure that there's record, that there was no Freedom of Information Act submitted to the city in the last two business days, from me or from another competitor?
Today, or Friday. Correct.
Thank you.
Not to my knowledge, either today or Friday, which we're...
Thank you. Okay?
Do you respond?
Yes.
I'm here on behalf of Advanced Disposal. Actually, I'm from Lawford, Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney in Pittsburgh. Spoke with Mr. Kelly earlier today to let him know that I would be here. I did want to, to blindside council with an attorney showing up. But I have had the opportunity to review Republic's letter that they sent, I believe, on Friday. For better or for worse, I've been through dozens of bid disputes all over the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, familiar with the facts of those disputes and certainly familiar with the law. And the five, I guess you want to call it issues that Republic has with Advanced Bid, really under the case law, you could consider them to be nothing more than technical trivial issues. I've heard on a few occasions, people either making fun of or trying to make fun of mathematical errors. If there isn't a person in this room that hasn't made a mathematic wear once in a while in their life, then, you know, good for you. But at the end of the day, a mathematic wear in a bid, as I'm sure Mr. Kelly will tell you, there's dozens of cases in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, actually probably hundreds dealing with mathematical errors. That does not get you to being able to, I'm going to say not award, but it's certainly not a material defect at the end of the day if the contractor will tell you they're going to honor that bid. Now, it was a sixteen thousand dollar error over, when you're dealing with at least twelve million dollars yourself over the course of ten years, if you add everything up. So this mathematical error that I keep hearing about, I think, has much to do about nothing. Certainly not legally, it's nothing. The other issue they raised was, there was an addendum number two that was issued. I believe it was to recognize that the bids had to be in by May twenty-second and it wasn't executed somehow by Advanced. Advanced got the bid in on the twenty-second. At the end of the day, by not, no, they wouldn't have gotten the bid in on the twenty-second and they didn't sign that addendum, then we had issues. So that failure to sign addendum number two, once again, it's a trivial, technical issue that's been raised by a disappointed bidder who at the end of the day, their bid is nine hundred, about nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars more than what our, than what Advanced bid was over the period of ten years. Now, one of the factors in every single bid dispute that I've been involved in is what's best for the public fisc. What's best for the public fisc here is obvious, with nine hundred, about a nine hundred and twenty thousand dollar difference over ten years, is Advanced's proposal. That's the bottom line, nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. They also raised an issue with something about not answering the first question in the transfer station or roll-off services section of the bid. I reviewed that today, I reviewed all the documentation today. They did answer that question, we answered the question no. Republic answered the question no because, with something else behind it. We did answer the question. The bottom line is, there was nothing else, no modifications that we believe need made to the station, and there was no modifications that Republic believed needed made to the modification. So because they used more words than us, I guess ours is defective. It's not the case. Once again, what they've raised here is much to do about nothing. We are a responsible bidder, unquestionably a responsible bidder, and we are here to answer whatever questions council or anybody in the audience may have.
Sir, I just want to make it clear, the problem that I have isn't with how these bids were done and what they bid on. Quite frankly, I'll leave that to the lawyers to fight over, depending on how it ends, how this thing ends up. The problem that I have is the whole structure of what we're trying to do here. You know, in the fall, we had a bid that was just what we had been doing for the past, I don't know, seventy-five years or something, just hauling garbage, didn't have anything to do with the transfer station. We had bids that were lower than what people were currently paying now, we rejected those bids because some members of council felt that we needed to do something more with our, with our transfer station. I don't agree with what we're doing. It has nothing to do with who's the responsible bidder in my mind. I'm sure you're both responsible bidders and good companies. So I just want that to be clear, that that may be between the bidders and our solicitor tells us that, and our city manager tells us that the bidders have, you know, done what they were supposed to do under the bid guidelines. That's fine with me. The problem that I have is the whole fundamental way this thing was bid in the first place. So I just wanted to be clear on that.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Excuse me, I do have a question as soon as I find the document that I'm looking for. I think the difference is that in year two, year two and year three, as submitted by Advanced, appear to be the same. And yet, when you carry the numbers through, you know, for the total, you use what I presume was the correct year-two numbers. Do you have any proof or any document that shows what the year-two numbers were?
Mr. Jim, I do have with me a number of representatives from Advanced here. Now, I did go through all the documentation today for, prepared for being here this evening. What I can tell you is that when I walked through it and also walked through it with Advanced representatives, it was a sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollar and twenty cent mathematical error, which, that was in the summary sheet, it wasn't in the final, I think it was page one of the bid tally. And I can certainly have...
Are you, are you telling us that Advanced will accept the lower, or offer us that lower amount even though it was a mistake?
Absolutely. Although I, what I would also say, Mr. Jim, is that I think that the page one of the bid form, and I brought it up here with me, here it is, that was correct. And Randy, if you want to...
What was the second-year total on the...
The second-year total on the first page of the bid form was one million, two hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and eighty cents.
And are you willing to offer the city that price for the second year?
Yes. Bottom line, yes. And we can put something on the record here, Mr. Jim.
I have no objection to it. I would say if you have something you want to give to the secretary, a copy of some document perhaps that you have, you know, I don't quite know how to handle this. Mr. Kelly, what do you suggest?
The record has been made to take recording, I don't think we need to put the document.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Sir, I have one, one thing I'd like to add.
Sure.
You stated that the issues raised by Republic are much ado about nothing. That's a rather, that's a rather cavalier attitude. It gives me pause. If this is your attitude and this is the attitude of this company, how do they conduct their business?
I know this company, they know, it's nothing to do with being cavalier.
Cass, you can defend them, but you already made your point.
I have one other question. I asked Green Ridge what their assets were and they said it was eight billion, one hundred million. I don't think you can quite come close to that, but I did read where your assets were three billion, seven hundred and eighty-five billion. Is that, is that correct, sir? Are those correct assets? Somebody's nodding their head, I don't know who it is.
That's correct, Mr. Jim. I'm told that's correct.
All right. These are two rather big boys that, yes, they're arguing, I would say. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Jim.
Thank you. Anybody else? Citizens, comments? Okay, thank you. Anybody for committee reports here? Board of Attorney reports? We have one here, Board of... Rosie, anything for the pardon? Pardon reports? Chief Moore?
Nothing for tonight.
Chief Brazil here?
Nothing.
Okay. On Joe, Bush?
Nothing for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item now taken up under the, or being taken up under administration finance is an ordinance. The caption of the ordinance is, "An Ordinance of the City of Latrobe, Westmoreland County, Pennsylvania, Providing for Entering Into an Intergovernmental Agreement with the County of Westmoreland, Pennsylvania for the Purpose of the County of Westmoreland Inspecting Parking Meters for the City of Latrobe." Essentially, the ordinance is, is a two-page ordinance, the purpose of which is to authorize the city to enter into this intergovernmental cooperation agreement whereby the county will inspect our parking meters on a contract basis. The motion would be to enact the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor, it has been duly advertised.
Can we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jim, I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stapora, any questions or discussion? Questions? Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item...
This is ordinance two thousand thirteen four. Mr. Stapora?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mr. Jim Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Narri?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-seven, yes. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next, the next item on the agenda is a resolution. The title is, "Including Children of City Employees in City-Funded Eye and Dental Plans Up to the Age of Twenty-Six." I will read the resolutions, very short, and the motion, and after the motion has been made, Mr. Cossion is asked if he could offer a comment. The resolution reads, "Section one that the Council of the City of Latrobe hereby proves inclusion of children of city employees in the city-funded eye and dental plans up to age twenty-six. This inclusion is in addition to and supplemental to the existing medical coverage for children of city employees up to age twenty-six. Section two authorizes the city manager to implement this resolution through CB Tracy, the plan administrator, resolved in Council of the State. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined..."
Okay, may I have a motion?
I shall move, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Paul Narri, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Stapora, questions or discussion?
I have a question. At the request of, in the last meeting, I was asked to provide information related to the cost to the city. I would like to call your attention to the manager's report, page three, dated May twenty-eighth, June tenth, two thousand thirteen, so three of six, second bullet, beginning with the sentence, "Dependent Children and Ancillary Benefits." In that paragraph, I outlined the impact anticipated in the city. I'll read to you the last couple sentences. "We're self-funded," just to be clear. So that basically means, over the years, we have contributed to this fund and we, over the years, manage it and cover our costs. "It is not expected that this change will impact rates or the reserve position of the self-funded dental or vision benefits. The risk is minimal and usually involves two routine preventative visits per year, approximately two hundred dollars per member, which would be absorbed by our reserve. I recommend adopting this provision for the ancillary benefits without increasing our annual fee." That last sentence just says, there's no increase, you know, that I see now and into the future absorbing this. Again, the rest of that paragraph, beginning with the dependent children, bullet point two, page three, describes what it is we're doing as it relates to the Affordable Care Act, but more importantly, as it relates to the students who kind of, for the young people that fall into that window, being above eighteen and no longer a student and below the age of twenty-six. And you can see the census that we have for that age group and you can see three will be added to plan. Currently, there's nine that are eligible, or nine, six that are being carried because they're students, and three that are not being carried. So in essence, we're adding three to it currently. Of course, that will change here from here, just like any other benefit, self-funded plan, you know, I can't say five, six, seven years from now, this would not result in a slight increase, but it's really marginal given your population and that age group and their dental needs, vision needs as well.
I just have one comment. I believe this is an item that should have been, have been bargained and probably should be bargained in the next contract. Once we adopt it, it's there forever. I mean, right now, there may not be a significant impact because of the age of our workforce and the age of their children, but I think there's potential cost that we're, you know, long-term beyond the next five or ten years, we don't know about, and once we get it in there, we don't get it out. It's something that we, I believe, we should save to negotiations at the next contract.
I have a question, and just to be clear, the Affordable Care, the Affordable Care Act requires, requires medical coverage for children up to age twenty-six, but not dental and eye care, is that correct?
Yes, it is correct.
So we're not obligated by the Affordable Care Act to provide this coverage?
Correct. Recently, it came to my attention that a couple of folks who thought they had the coverage fell through the cracks and they asked me about it with Ms. Buck and CB Tracy, figured I would let this situation we had, and that's why I presented the council, just to give them the opportunity, if they so choose, and as Mrs. Wolford says, not to act now, but possibly under bargaining, I just wanted to bring it to your attention and have it before you in a proper manner.
And I then concur and agree that we should, this should be doubled in a bargaining session rather than here.
Understood.
My opinion.
Is this, I don't know whether it is a chip on ours for us to bargain with the union with this amount? with this amounts to...
Certainly, anytime you have something like that, you know, it would be. But it's minimal. I mean, it doesn't affect a large group of people, per se, from year to year. But it is an additional benefit, as Mrs. Wolford pointed out.
Would it affect the ASC, the union that is more or less protesting this contract?
I've not determined the specifics, whether it is for, you know, benefits more for the FOB or for ASC.
I see. I move to table on my motion.
Second?
I second, Madam Mayor.
One favorable motion.
All favor? All favor to tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we get to the first vote for the tabling?
Yes, we have to say all opposed. All opposed.
Aye.
Aye.
So, what's going on?
Oh, that's a tabling?
No.
The first vote, when you asked, people said aye to table, but then there was never a request for those opposed.
That's why I thought I heard one before.
Now, I'm opposed to it.
I'm opposed.
To tabling it.
Do a voice vote.
Do it.
All right. Okay. This, you're opposed to tabling it.
Yeah, the motion is to table. So, the first vote would be all opposed.
All favor to tabling it.
One, two, three. Now opposed.
Now opposed to tabling it.
Opposed. So, we now have a motion on the floor.
Take the vote.
We need a motion.
We have a motion.
We have a motion. The motion is to table it.
Yeah, we didn't have one.
Be all favor, all against. No, actually, the resolution...
This is Resolution 2013-28. Mr. Jim.
Yes.
Mr. Scopora.
No.
Mrs. Wolford.
No.
Mr. Jivin Angela.
No.
Mr. Bald Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Forish.
Yes.
Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
Third and four, yes. Motion, Karen.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item on the agenda is approving an agreement with First Energy Solutions to provide electricity generation for metered accounts. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we engaged the company by the name of Key Tech to negotiate the best price.
Mr. Kelly, did you skip one?
Did I?
Please give them.
Oh, sorry about that. Sorry about that. Item number four is a resolution. It's entitled "Renewing City Healthcare Plan with UPMC." Whereas the city currently provides healthcare coverage to its employees pursuant to the collective bargaining agreements as being provided through the UPMC Small Business Advantage Plan. Whereas the plan has a policy period of one year, commencing in July 1st of each year. Whereas, the city now desires to renew the plan with UPMC. Now, therefore, be resolved. The Council of the City of Latrobe hereby approves renewing the plan with UPMC to provide healthcare coverage for designated beneficiaries for a period commencing July 1, 2013, through and including June 30, 2014. Said contract documents being attached hereto in form of Exhibit A, and Section two authorizes the city manager, the mayor, the city secretary, any other proper city officer to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution and the renewal of the plan approved herein. Resolved in Council of the State, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
Can I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I so move.
Mr. Bald Mary, second, please.
I'll second.
Mr. Scopora, any questions or discussion?
I have a question. What is the increase this year, Alex, between from this year to last percentage?
The percentage is 19.9% as, you know, offered currently on the table. The total dollar amount is $47,039.76. Been working up until about 6 o'clock this evening with writers at UPMC to get a better rate. We experienced, as a group, a challenging year last year, and which really resulted in this premium increase. I think we've been able to make an effective argument that we should have a second look, and they're doing that. They're anxious to get our business, and I will refer to my specific comments found on page three of the manager's report. First bullet, and just to say there, you know, last year, we had a 47% rate decrease by moving from Highmark to UPMC. Unfortunately, this year, we had costly medical claims, and UPMC feels they need to increase the rates to better support the risk of our group. However, they're very interested in keeping our business and is taking our requests into consideration. We did solicit three other quotes from other carriers, and none were close to the current UPMC offer. In fact, they were higher than where we were at last year with the rate that Highmark was offering us. We're still working with them to secure a lower rate. And again, when the materials that we provided to you per our contract, we may have a little wiggle room to go maybe to the next one down, which would be a 14% increase. But anything lower would really risk meeting the obligation of the contract. Contracts. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? This is Resolution 2013-29. Mr. Forish.
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary.
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford.
Yes.
Mr. Scopora.
Yes.
Mr. Jim.
Yes.
Mr. Jivin Angela.
Yes.
Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
Third and seven, yes. Motion, Karen.
I move for a five-minute recess.
Time to begin again. Everybody, please sit.
The only problem is we don't have any numbers. And where do you get them? You're the only one that has them. Where are they? Did you see them? And how you bought them. I mean, I'm trying to see if I can get that information. I don't think you should be able to provide it. Yeah, that was there. That's all might want to hang light on.
It works.
All right.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item on the agenda then is a resolution. It's entitled "Approving Electric Supply Agreement with First Energy Solutions Corporation for Electricity Generation for Metered Accounts of the City of Latrobe. Therefore, be resolved, section one, that the Council of the City of Latrobe approves and accepts the electric program enrollment forms submitted by Key Tech's Energy with First Energy Solutions to provide electricity generation for metered accounts for the city at a fixed price of .0573 cents per kilowatt hour with service to begin on the meter read date in June 2013 and to extend through meter read date of June 2015. In section two, the council does hereby ratify the actions of the city manager in signing an agreement with First Energy Solutions to provide electric service in accordance with the rate and term as set forth in the document attached hereto to Exhibit A. And section three authorizes the mayor, city manager, and any other officer to sign any and all other documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution and the program enrollment agreement. Resolved in Council of the State, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor."
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mr. Scopora, second.
I'll second.
Mr. Forish. Any questions or discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Alex, do you know what our rate per kilowatt hour was last year and about how many kilowatts we used?
The second question is going to be a little more challenging. The rate that we had last year is 0.64 cents per kilowatt hour. It will decrease to 5.73, which is a 10.5% savings.
We're going to 0.53 now?
Correct. We're, and again, the... Yes.
0.573 or 0.54?
0.573. Sorry if I read wrong.
0.573.
And 0.64 was the previous rate?
Yes, sir.
Don't happen to know what our kilowatt hour uses? I mean, I'm just looking at the type of savings. If we use the same amount of electricity this year as we did last year, you're looking at paying less in electric.
Yeah. Long off the top of my head, and I can get it in a minute, is maybe we read the next amendment or go through the votes. I can get you a more detailed figure.
That's fine. We have that, that's fine.
Other questions? Mark?
If you want to review the different amounts. Electricity for municipal building, $33,000. So, we'll be saving, you know, 10% of $33,000. Up at the transfer station, Public Works as well. Let's see, electricity, $4,200, City Garage. There's also electricity that the compactor uses as well. And... And again, that's another, that's a smaller amount, I think, about 1,600. He showed me about 30 accounts. We have literally 35 or so accounts for electricity. And then lastly, it's $20,000 at the fire department. We pay for the electricity at the various fire stations in the city, and we save this there as well. And then again, to separate, and the next one, which is a lower savings, is for the streetlights. And we spent about $160,000 to light the town, various streetlights and traffic lights.
This rate doesn't apply to the streetlights, though.
That's the next option, and that's 9.5%.
So, we're looking at about, I believe, over $5,000 more savings last year to this year in electric?
Yes, sir, just on our building costs for electricity. And then again, another $20,000 or $18,000 for the streetlights.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
This is Scopora, who would help.
Yeah, in the packet, I believe the total usage last year for all of the kilowatt, or all of the metered accounts was $1,464,402 kilowatt hours. So, if you multiply that through by the differential.
Okay, Mark. This is Resolution 2013-30. Mrs. Wolford.
Yes.
Mr. Jivin Angela.
Yes.
Mr. Forish.
Yes.
Mr. Scopora.
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Jim.
Yes.
Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
Third and seven, yes. Motion, Karen, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item is a second agreement. By resolution, it's approving electric supply agreement with Champion Energy Services for street lighting electricity generation. Now, therefore, be resolved, section one. Council of the City of Latrobe does hereby ratify and approve the actions of the city manager in signing and entering into an electric supply agreement with Champion Energy Services for generation of electricity for streetlights located in the city of Latrobe for a period of 24 months, beginning in December 2013 and extending to December 2015 at the rate of .05188 per kilowatt hour. And in section two, the Council of the City of Latrobe authorizes and directs the mayor, city manager, secretary, and any other proper city officer to sign any and all documents necessary and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution and the lighting agreement approved herein. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Scopora, second, please.
Second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bald Mary, any questions or discussion? Questions? Questions? This is Resolution 2013-31. Mr. Jivin Angela.
Yes.
Mr. Forish.
Yes.
Mr. Jim.
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford.
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Scopora.
Yes.
Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
Third and seven, yes. Motion, Karen, thank you.
Mr. Kelly.
They're really a bridge person.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item appears under the Planning and Development Department. It is a resolution. It is entitled "Waving Subdivision Requirement for Westmoreland County Community College in Acceptance of Deed of Dedication." And in effect, this resolution waives any subdivision requirement we may have in order for the community college to separate a very small triangular piece of ground at the intersection of the sidewalks of Jefferson Street and Deepak Street. There's a streetlight located on that ground, and they are in effect going to do a deed of dedication to give it back to us. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
Have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bald Mary, second.
Second, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolford, any questions or discussion? Questions, discussion? Any questions, discussion? Okay, Mark. This is Resolution 2013-32. Mr. Bald Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Jim.
Yes.
Mr. Scopora.
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford.
Yes.
Mr. Forish.
Yes.
Mr. Jivin Angela.
Yes.
Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
Third and seven, yes. Motion, Karen, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item also appears under the Planning and Development Department. It is a resolution. The title is "Approving Encroachment and Restricted Encroachment License Agreement with Fairview Dairy Inc. for Valley Dairy Property at the intersection of Jefferson and Chestnut Street." And in effect, the Valley Dairy is asking for the right to intrude, if you will, into the alleyway with a fencing that will go around the dumpster that currently services the Valley Dairy property. This resolution grants a waiver with regard to the prohibition of placing something in the alley, and it grants an encroachment license to establish the existence of the dumpster and the fence around the dumpster. There is a diagram attached to the resolution. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Wolford, second. Second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bald Mary, any questions or discussion? Questions?
I have some questions. Chief of Police and the Chief of Fire, have we, have they reviewed this? Do they see any issues with safety with this inclusion into the alley?
I have. I don't have any.
Okay, thank you. Vote.
From what I understand, Mr. Scopora, the dumpster right now, there's a sidewalk that runs along the edge of the building. The dumpster is actually fully in the alley. My understanding is that they are going to cut the sidewalk, if you will, and wave the dumpster actually back closer to the building and then put the fence around it. So, it should actually help with safety, I think.
But the dumpster is movable. If we had to get a piece of equipment up there, my concern with the fence is if that's what I would put it. They're okay with it, I'm fine.
I'm here on the ad of miller architecture.
I'm here on the, uh, millery architecture, um, I'm the one that just handed you the packet that you're looking at. Um, if you have any questions, uh, the first page, A one, is a simple site plan showing you, uh, the location of the dumpster, uh, it's in the rear of the building, and if you draw your attention to A three, the third page, uh, it shows you two pictures basically of the dumpster's current condition, and, uh, there's currently an access hatch, if you look on A two, uh, in plan, uh, it's approximately twenty-two feet from the edge of the building, uh, to the, uh, the door of the dumpster that we're proposing. So the only thing that would be encroaching along the alleyway would be the swing of the door, and there to go a hundred and eighty degrees in both directions, so that it would not, uh, prohibit traffic from getting down the alleyway at that time, and it would be closed, um, when they were finished emptying them. Um, is there any other questions regarding?
Yeah, I have a couple questions. Uh, Pat, you plan on setting these dumpsters onto cement pad, or are you planning on putting them onto regular asphalt pad?
Well, currently, they're located on, on the, uh, the cement or asphalt, so we weren't proposing any type of, uh, pad to rest them on, because they're on, on wheels, caster wheels, um, the dumpsters themselves. All we were planning on doing was, uh, demoing a portion of that slab that might put cycle, sorry.
And leaving the existing alley the way it is?
Yes.
Joe, am I not right, is that our alley, we're in charge of maintenance and everything on that paved alley right now?
Yes.
Okay, put the council's attention what they're proposing to do here now, uh, in a year, no, we'll give it two years, see if they have one big giant rough hole there because that driving structure is going to be backing in at the same angle all the time, and all that's going to do is push the asphalt up and remove the adreids from below and bring the clay up, and you're going to have a very bad sinkhole there.
Are they dumping the dumpster now? Or is the dumpster there now?
But they're not going into confined space now, they're going into confined space, parking, backing in every single time at the exact same spot, as we've raised codes with dumpsters on asphalt. That's why most of them have a cement pad that they set on in an asphalt existence area.
How's the difference that it is now? How, how is what they're going to do?
They're right now, them guys can jump out, they pull up that alley, they pull up, they grab it by the handle, they move it around a little bit, or they hook a cable to it and swing it out around how they want it to move there, and they're not, what they're going to be doing now, Rosie, is they're going to be going in the exact same spot every time because they're in a, in a confined space, more or less.
I'm sorry, sir, but, uh, the dumpsters are still capable of being wheeled outside of the enclosure, the enclosure is simply there to beautify the alleyway, to hide them from any history.
I understand, I'm just looking at the future thing of, uh, laying asphalt thirty years, I know what happens with them, I'm replacing them.
Or you can either like stare at dumpsters or?
I understand, I'm just asking you what your specs was if you was putting it on, I was just giving council a couple options to look at here. Mr. Forrest, is it where the dumpster is, is that where the rupture created, or is it where the truck? Well, what'll happen now, where the dumpster is going to be sitting, that truck is going to back in, this is your located area, that truck's going to back in every single time, right there, right there, right there, twisting and pushing on your asphalt. So requiring the dumpster to be on cement would not solve that problem? Well, I think, for what that area they're wanting to do, if they just made a slab right there, that whole area out, I mean, that would radiate your car, and we saw the truck growing, if him pulling the same slope, right?
If you, we have them replace that pad out the whole existence of that area where he comes back in, and not all of us to rest the alley.
I might add, even if, uh, even if they put a pad in there that the, if the dumpsters was on on cement, it would make it easier for the drivers to reach it, hook the cable up to it, or grab it and jerk it out, whatever you get through, it wouldn't be back in and on that area. You've got a very small area right there.
The, um, the resolution does provide that if the city determines that the granting of the encroachment would cause a hazard or nuisance to the public, that it can be terminated. So, you know, we have that right, or we can request the property owner to assist in the cost of the repairs if we have to match a certain part of the alleyway.
As is where his plan is now, I can foresee they're going to be pulling in on the Naffers program to get into that dumpster.
Won't they be coming down the alley the same way they're coming down the alley now?
They're not going into confined space, they're ready, right now they have options.
He's saying they can pull them out, and they're not going to be able to go on Naffers property to do it, because there's, there's, I don't know, maybe they will, I'll hold them out, I don't know.
As of right now, the encroachment is to allow this access hatch, it's only coming out about six or seven inches past that access hatch, which is current, uh, and you cannot drive over that, I'm assuming that access hatch with the truck, so, um, I mean, seven inches is, is a very minimal distance that's encroaching past that current point, I'm not sure.
Just make it, I pointed out here.
Yep, I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion?
This is resolution two thousand thirteen thirty-three. Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
No.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
No.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Third is five yes, two no.
Madam Mayor, thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of council, we are now at that point, under the public works department, where the first item would be a motion and a resolution to award the solid waste and recycling service, uh, commercial solid waste transfer station transport and disposal services, roll off, uh, collection refuse services. Uh, I will simply highlight the resolution and provide the motion, I would prior to doing that, however, ask the council to consider the, uh, comments of labor council, which have been engaged by the city with regard to, uh, this particular matter. The resolution, uh, reads acceptance of bid for municipal waste disposal contract, now therefore be resolved, the bid submitted by, and that name would have to be filled in, uh, for the collection, transportation, disposal of municipal waste and recyclables, according to the bid specifications of the city, at the unit price is set forth in the bid for five consecutive twelve-month cycles, uh, with a five-year renewal at the option of the city of Latrobe, uh, is hereby accepted, uh, and section two would award a contract based upon that bid, the current low bidder?
Is advanced disposal.
Uh, for the, uh, according to the numbers in the bid.
I'll make that motion, can we give it to Vance and the lowest bidder?
Second?
I second, Madam Mayor.
Second by Stephen, any questions or discussion?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table, uh, this award until we've had the opportunity to meet with the union for the next, uh, council meeting, whichever occurs sooner. That's my motion to table.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand the motion, until we meet with the union or the next council member, whichever occurs soon, we can meet with the union on a Tuesday or Thursday or Friday, we're not suggesting we would have a meeting that night, are we?
No, no, I'm, I'm suggesting that we table it then till the next meeting, after that meeting.
Do we have a second to table? A second? No. Any questions or discussions, we haven't read the motion out.
Okay, Forrest. This is resolution two thousand thirteen thirty-four. Mr. Jim?
Is this, uh, voting for the lowest bidder?
Yes.
Um, my vote is yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
No.
Mr. Bald Mary?
No.
Mrs. Wolfert?
No.
Mayor Griffin?
No.
Four, three, okay, four, three? Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item also appears under public works department, and it's simply a motion, and the motion reads, I move to authorize the solicitor to prepare an advertise and ordinance amending various rates charged by the sanitation department, and I recognize that the, uh, agenda motion simply addresses, uh, one rate, and that would be, uh, the basic minimum rate from eight dollars to twelve dollars, uh, if there are any other rates the council wishes to include, they can't be included by this motion, if not, it will be that one rate.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have an animal, second?
I'll second a motion.
Any questions or discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I, I think, uh, we need to be prudent, uh, in evaluating, uh, this ordinance, um, there's no need to rush the rates, those rates at this point, uh, I think we should vote no.
Any other questions or discussion? Stephen?
Kenny, reason for not raising the rates, it has not been raised for so long? I think that should be packaged, with, packaged, that any rate increases should be, uh, done in accordance with a new contract. There's a little, uh, there's, there's a, there's a, a bit of a deficiency in, in this ordinance, uh, raising the rates from eight to twelve dollars for anything under two hundred pounds, um, if someone comes in with a hundred ninety pound load, he pays twelve dollars, if someone comes in with a two hundred and forty pound load, he pays less.
Not correct.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it is.
No.
Yeah. Wait a minute, would you explain that, Mr. Bald Mary? Uh, my understanding is that these going, twenty-pound increments are charges, and if it's two hundred and forty pounds, uh, that's twelve units at the rate of what, what's the rate?
Seven forty.
So it would be less to bring two hundred and forty pounds across the scale?
And I'm quite surprised, because right now, what do they get for their eight dollars? How many pounds?
Up to two hundred.
Up to two hundred, so the only increase would be that this would go from eight to twelve for up to two hundred, and then there will be an incremental increase, excuse me, please, there'd be an incremental increase up to the two tons, and the total overall cost would still be ninety-five dollars a ton. So?
Your point.
Good point?
Your point.
My point is that your point is incorrect.
No, it's not, Richard, it's, it's not, it's that simple. You take two hundred and forty pounds, and you get charged twelve units at, how much, Darlene?
Eleven forty.
Eleven forty, that's two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty cents.
And what would you be charged, Darlene?
Sister, sister, you'd be driving him.
Right now, two hundred pounds and below is eight dollars.
Right.
Two hundred and twenty pounds is ten forty-five.
Okay, so you, so, excuse me, so then you get, uh, twelve dollars for the first, but then?
I'm just saying, there's, there's?
For the first two hundred pounds.
You're paying more.
You're paying more for dumping less.
No, it doesn't, but this doesn't jump to two twelve dollars and forty cents for the next twenty-five, or two dollars and forty cents more. I understand it, I don't know.
Anybody, any other questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
The motion is to reenact the five ordinance to increase certain rates, uh, for, for the transfer station, and obviously the one that's.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Forrest, a hand?
Who said no back there?
I'm gonna do a handshake. I'll give now.
Who were the notes?
Four, Mike, me, and Russ.
Four, thank you. Okay. Okay, thanks, four, three.
I think I'll do better on the next one, who knows?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item, the next item is under the police department, it is an ordinance, and the ordinance is entitled prohibiting the use of engine brake retarders on certain streets within the city of Latrobe, now therefore being enacted and retained, section one, council of the city of Latrobe hereby prohibits the use of engine brake retarders on the following highways located within the city limits, state route nine eighty-one Lloyd Avenue, state route nine eighty-one Depot Street, state route nine eighty-one Main Street, Lincoln Avenue, and Millionaire Street. Uh, section two exempts all, uh, city-owned vehicles from this prohibition. Section three establishes a fine, an initial fine of fifty dollars for the first violation plus the cost of prosecution. A subsequent citation against the same operator occurring within a two-year period will result in a fine or penalty of one hundred dollars for the violation. Uh, section four authorizes the mayor's, uh, city manager and city secretary to take any and all action necessary to implement this ordinance, and section five just says that if any of the provisions are declared to be unconstitutional or invalid, the remainder of the ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. The motion would be to enact the ordinance as outlined by your solicitor.
May I have a motion? So moved, Madam Mayor. Mrs. Wolfert, second?
No.
Second, please.
I'll second it.
Mr. Jim, any questions or discussion?
Madam Mayor, once again, I've repeatedly, uh, opposed the enacting of an ordinance prohibiting the use of jake brakes in this town, uh, we have no hills on the, uh, streets that have been designated, there's, uh, no usage of jake brakes today, I've lived in this town for sixty-four years, I've never heard of jake brake, uh, I think it also adds to our urban plight, uh, that will require, uh, numerous signs to be placed on these streets prohibiting these activities, one thing we don't need is more signs, uh, I urge council to vote no on this ordinance.
Any other questions or discussion? Question, question, okay, Mark?
This is ordinance two thousand thirteen five. Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
No.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Third is six yes, one no.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item also appears under the police department, it is a resolution entitled establishing handicap parking space in East, East Second Avenue, now therefore be resolved, uh, that a handicap parking space located on the north side of East Second Avenue specifically, forty-two East Second Avenue, adjacent to property, lease the shape will be in the same as hereby designated, this is a handicap parking space, section two authorizes the appropriate, uh, signage placement, uh, and, uh, the motion or the resolution, the proper motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
I have a motion, please. You have a motion? So moved, Madam Mayor. Mrs. Wolfert, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scapora, any questions or discussion? Questions, discussion, good, Mark?
Um, I'm looking at her application, uh, she indicates that she's injured her back and cannot walk long distances, uh, is this a permanent or temporary condition, and if it is, uh, temporary, will she be, uh, rescinding, uh, her application upon recovery?
Does anyone have the answer?
Does anyone have the answer? And what is the nature of this injury?
Kenny, I can, I can answer that.
Or me?
I can answer that question.
Please do so.
Uh, as far as the injury goes, I can't comment on that, but we do assess handicap signs every year or so, we go door to door, talk to the people, if the person still is not in need of a handicap sign, we have it removed.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, I couldn't quite hear you, but as I understand it, we do review those annually or every, so often, and then if somebody, if it's not needed at that location?
Or they move, or?
All right, that would be true in this case also, then, Chief. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Good, Mark?
This is resolution- This is Resolution 2013-34. Mrs. Wolford.
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry.
I abstain. For what reason? I don't have to state the reason.
Yeah, I think you're required to state why you're abstaining. Do you know the person or is it...
I don't know the person. I don't know the nature, the injury, the application to me. I'll change my... No.
Mr. Forrest.
Yes.
Mr. Scopora.
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Jim.
Yes.
Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
There are six yes, one no.
Madam Mayor, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the last item appears under new business. It is also a resolution pointing to the zoning hearing board now therefore be resolved section one of Thomas Horwath being is hereby appointed to the zoning hearing board for a five-year term. Said term to expire January 31, 2018.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldmarry, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scopora, any questions or discussion? Questions, discussion?
Madam Mayor, before you take the vote, I'm corrected. Apparently, Mr. Horwath's term was for a vacancy which was started last year. So the ending date is on January 31, 2018, or 2017.
Any other questions? Page four.
This is Resolution 2013-35. Mr. Jivinangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Jim.
Yes.
Mr. Forrest.
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford.
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry.
Yes.
Mr. Scopora.
Yes.
Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
There are seven yes.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have no further items for the agenda. However, I am going to ask, and I realize the hour is late, but I'm going to ask for a brief executive session, about 10 minutes with the council. As a conclusion, we...
Do we have unfinished business? So if the...
Well, he wanted it out. If he wants it at the end of the meeting, he'd get it out. Just wait for the public's second base to finish.
Well, I just want to have one item under unfinished business and that is, and I'm embarrassed that we have gone through this exercise on this garbage contract so many times, embarrassed in fact that I know the work that the bidders put in to do this kind of thing. I really think we've taken something simple and tried to make it complicated without having all the facts. And I really urge this council to try to get this thing resolved in a timely fashion. We're down to December when this contract expires. I would really like to go back to what we started with at the beginning and that was let the people who want the bags and stickers get the bags and stickers and let the people that want the roll-off carts have the roll-off carts and take the next couple of years and do a serious study of the transfer station. Try to see if we can put together a business plan that makes it, you know, a profitable or more profitable organization and go from that point. I mean, heaven help us, we let the people decide how they want to get rid of their trash, either in a garbage can or in bags and stickers. I mean, I don't understand why we have to make this so complicated, but it's getting to be, I think, an embarrassment.
I have to agree with Mrs. Wolford to this extent that I don't think the public really wants those 65-gallon roll-off totes. 3,096 of those spread around all over town with...
How many phone calls do you get?
Excuse me, excuse me.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jim.
With yellow tops, you know, and the only thing I ask for is, I'm glad to hear that you're going to back off the 65-gallon totes, but...
Who said that? Who said we're backing off the 65-gallon totes?
I'm glad to hear that.
Please, 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 let me interrupt the two of you. We need to keep in mind what is important before this council and that is we are serving the citizens of this city. We need to keep that in mind. We have to give them the lowest rate and we have to give them choice. That's all we're doing. We give them choice and we give them low rates. We keep the garbage down for the citizens, the taxpayers, the residents, the renters in this town. And don't forget the businesses.
Does that include the 65-gallon totes?
I think your body could probably fit in one of those 65-gallon totes.
How about new business?
I have nothing further.
New business. They may have new business. Okay.
By the way, what's the executive session?
Okay, Alex.
My manager's report has been submitted to council. I have made a number of extra copies available to public. If they run out, I will certainly email those to whoever I would like to take a copy. Just one thing I did miss out on in the manager's report is that I enjoyed last week's fireman's fair and thank you, Councilmember Forrest, for letting me help out in the kitchen. It was my pleasure. But beside that, I just really want you to encourage council and the public to take advantage of looking through the manager's report. There's a number of issues that will be coming up in months ahead that I hope you begin to get a heads up on. But I'm very encouraged, I know a number of folks were here because of the two respective bidders, but there's also a lot of new faces that I believe represent the public and just wanted to invite you back to future meetings. Who knows, maybe we'll start having cookies and coffee and make more of an event out of it. Thank you for coming.
I don't have anything to say. May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam.
Baldmarry, second, please. For Jim. Okay, all in favor? Madam Mayor, thank you, everybody.